Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Regular Council Meeting on August 15th, 2022. My apologies, I'm sitting in for the mayor tonight, and so of course, I'm not quite all prepared. So there we go. We thank you for taking part in your city government. At the meetings, the City Council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city.
President Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
President.
And Mayor Barajas.
Mayor Barajas is excused this evening. All right, thank you, and if you'd all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. Moving on to item four, Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by a roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion desired by the council members or the public, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Items on the Consent Agenda tonight are the approval of the meeting minutes from our August 1st and August 8th, 2022 meetings. Claims for the amount of, and the total amount of $5,096,915.22. To write off bad debt and the amount of $175,417.70, and if that amount authorized zero dollars to be turned over to collections. A bid award for the A Street Sports Complex Phase One. Project acceptance for the 20th Avenue Pedestrian Beacon Project and also the Industrial Way retrofit project. And a resolution for an amendment to the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Phase Two Agreement with RH2 Construction Services. Processed water reuse facility Phase Two Amendment Number Three with RH2 Engineering. An Amendment Two to the East UGA Expansion Sewer LID Number 152 Agreement with RH2. And setting 7:00 PM September 6th, 2022 as a time and date for a public meeting to consider the notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings on the Alfred Cole Annexation. Those are the items on the Consent Agenda. Is there any items that the council would like removed from the Consent Agenda? Any member of the public like to remove anything from the Consent Agenda? If not, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Motion is that we have a second. And it's been selected by Mr. Brown. Can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Campos.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Mellon.
Yes.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Yes.
It was unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item number five, Proclamations and Acknowledgements. So item A, this is a pretty fantastic item, and I'm excited for it, and I will happily turn this over to the chief in just a second. But we have an opportunity to express our appreciation to three community members that really provide some outstanding service for the community. I'll read a letter in just a little bit, but Chief, did you have some words first before I go? Would you like me to read the letter and?
Go ahead, read the letter now, I'll fill in.
All right, thank you, chief. So, Dear Mr. Villasenor, Mr. Root, and Mr. Alvarez, On behalf of the City of Pasco, City Council, and Fire Department Personnel, We wish to thank you and your crew members for taking the initiative to extinguish a residential structure fire on the afternoon of June 29th, 2022. By noticing the smoke coming over the fence of the property located north of where you were working at the time, and responding to it by using your company's water truck and personal fire extinguisher, you and your crews successfully contained the fire and saved the home from major fire damage. So thank you, and because of you, we all can be Pasco proud, knowing that a home continues to stand today because of your quick thinking and actions. So, chief, do you want to supplement that?
Sure, just a little bit more. For those of you who don't know, we're under Phase One of construction of a new fire station on Road 100, and these gentlemen were working for C and E trenching and just finishing up their workday when they noticed that a house right across the fence from the station site, the outside siding was on fire. And one of them jumped over the fence with a fire extinguisher and knocked that down, and another one brought the water truck up that they had there and able to spray it and put that out. And it's a pretty long run for us from our closest stations, either the one up by 68 in Sandifer or 48 in Court. So they contributed to minimizing extensively the damage that would have occurred to that home by the time fire units arrived. That's why we're building a fire station there, because it's a long ways from our existing station. So with that, we have a letter of appreciation. And gentlemen, there's two of the three here. If you'd like to come up, we'll present you with a challenge coin and congratulate you.
It's very easy sometimes for City Council and city staff to remember the people who work for the city and who are on the payroll. And it's another thing entirely to remember that we are a city of community members, and they will look out for one another. I think this is just an absolutely fantastic example of that community spirit and caring about one another. So again, just so grateful to have people like you in the community. Thank you. Any other comments or from council? All right, I'll move on to item B, Attendance Awareness Proclamation. So I have an item here, but first, I'd ask Ms. Harris to introduce this topic, if that's all right.
Great. Well, Mayor and City Councilpersons, thank you for this opportunity to really celebrate the City of Pasco's focus on the importance of education and changing the lives of each person, each child, each family, and the future of our community. As a proud resident of the City of Pasco, having raised children here and now a grandmama, and the proud daughter and mother of teachers, we know that attending school makes all the difference in learning. You can't learn unless you show up. And so many things get in the way of showing up. You know, life gets messy for families, and we really want to highlight the importance of attendance to graduation. And one day at a time, kids learn. So celebrating September as Attendance Awareness Month just reminds us all that if you see a kid at the corner grocery store and it's the middle of the day, we're all citizens of this town, like, aren't you supposed to be in school? If you're a parent or a grandparent or a neighbor, if we can support getting our kids to school, that makes a huge difference in their learning outcomes. You know, in our community, about half of the kids show up not ready for kindergarten. And so that's already a barrier. So we need them there every day so that the important investment that teachers make and that parents make in their learning can have an outcome to create the future citizens, the future council members, the voters, the employees that you all need for your robust businesses. So keep your kids in school, and thank you, City Council.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, I'll read a proclamation and bring it over to you in a second. So Attendance Awareness Month for September 2022. So whereas now, more than ever, good attendance in schools is essential to student achievement and progress towards graduation, whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created additional barriers to student participation in school. And whereas chronic absence, missing 10%, which is two or three days a month or more, is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates and weakens our community and local economy. And whereas all students, even those who show up regularly, are affected by chronic absence because teachers must spend time reviewing for students who miss lessons. And whereas student absenteeism can be significantly reduced when schools, parents, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from participating in school. Therefore, we, as, I, on behalf of Mayor Blanch Barajas, Mayor of the City of Pasco, do proclaim, "Our city will stand with the nation in recognizing September as Attendance Awareness Month. We are hereby commit to focusing on reducing absenteeism to give all children equal opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially." So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for that. So with that, we'll move on to item number six, Visitors Other Than Agenda Items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the City Council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizens' comments will be normally limited to three minutes each. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. And given, I recognize a whole lot of folks in the room here, and I'm excited to hear from you all, I do want to give City Manager Zabel a quick update on what we know is a very hot topic right now, especially to folks in our downtown region. So, Mr. Zabel, if you can talk a little bit about process for us?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. So we've had some comments. We had a presentation here at our previous workshop on retail cannabis in the downtown C2 Zone. We've also had a lot of discussion via email, and I know conversations as well outside of council, but it's, there's a lot to consider on this particular topic. We are preparing right now for the next workshop coming up on the 22nd next week. And that'll be an opportunity for council, and certainly, public input is welcome at this meeting tonight, but that'll give an opportunity for council to talk a little bit more broadly about a number of the issues. So retail, for instance, retail sales have been discussed, but the state law also provides for wholesale sales as well as agricultural, the growing of it. Probably at least something to discuss, because we're going to have to talk to the public eventually about this, and for them to understand what's on the table, council has to make some policy decisions and provide some directions. We need to talk about whether we're talking about just downtown or there are other areas in the city we might want to consider. What kind of limitations might there be on a particular type of establishment? For instance, retail cannabis, would that be by special use permit? What kind of zones? If by a special use permit, again, what special provisions might the council want to put on that type of use? Regardless of the zone. And zone can also relate to place. And so there, you know, there's a number of places in our community it could go. I don't know how acceptable that would be or where council's mind is on that, and so we need a little bit of direction on that. So those are, I think, some of the things I want to ask Director White if he might have a couple other observations as to other factors council might want to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel, and I think City Manager summed it up quite well. The agenda report's structured so that it poses questions that hopefully initiate council discussion on some of the issues Mr. Zabel just mentioned. The permitting process, the buffers, not just from other sensitive land uses, but from other I-502 uses. What kind of direction council wants to proceed in terms of growing, processing, and/or retail sales? Because each has its own set of implications. And then any kind of additional efforts to obtain public input on the whole menu of policy questions that at least will be posed in some kind of discussion-oriented rhetorical kind of atmosphere for next Monday's workshop session.
So I think, you know, unfortunately, we're in a position of kind of having to put the council a little bit on the spot next Monday night to say preliminarily, what does council want to discuss? So that we can then do an outreach plan and get people understanding, here's the limits of what council wants to discuss. The final product, based on public input, may look completely different than what you throw out there as a realm of possibility. So it's kind of this iterative process we're going to go through, I think, over the next few months or several weeks, however council determines, to come to a conclusion.
Great, thank you, Mr. Zabel and Mr. White. Just to be clear, Mr. Zabel, will there be, there will not be sort of draft resolution or ordinance at our next meeting next week, is that correct?
No, it's pretty open-ended, just really trying to get some policy direction from council. I will note, though, since you asked, there will be, depending on what direction council gives, you know, I'll say I have every indication from discussions I've had with council, there'll be plenty of opportunity for public input, but typically in a workshop, which includes our next meeting, that's really more a time for council to deliberate over the facts that they're able to be presented by council. But, you know, I think council, and I don't mean to speak for council, has indicated a pretty strong support for considerable public input on this issue.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Zabel and Director White, for your comments tonight. Next time, I'll add as part of this, we do have a translator in our audience tonight. If anyone needs translation services, that will be our official City of Pasco translator. Her name is Araceli Gedry, if I got that right? All right, excellent. So if you do need translation services, and I'd ask, please, if you could translate what I'm saying right now to the audience as well, for those who may not be able to understand me.
Buenas tardes, soy Araceli Gedry. Estoy aquí para traducir de inglés a español y de español a inglés. Si necesitan servicios de intermedio, estoy aquí disponible. Gracias.
Excellent. And last thing I'd like to mention is, obviously, there's, as Mr. Zabel's indicating, I think the council has made a clear preference for additional public input along the way, so we're not done yet. And so what we're looking for in public comment on any topic is new information, not repeating what someone else has already said, and we're looking for new perspectives as well. So those are what we're really looking tonight. So not intended to limit the public comment, but we'd ask that, given our, you know, limited time that we have here on the council meeting, that we'd ask for you to, again, focus on new information and new perspectives that we haven't heard yet. With that, I'd ask any member of public that would like to come and share some thoughts with us tonight. Sir, could you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, it's Jerry Martinez. Good evening, council. I've been meaning to come by and just speak to you all, but I've been waiting for the right time, and I realize I'm quickly learning in this role. There is no such thing as the right time. So I'm the new Executive Director for the Downtown Pasco Development Authority. Tomorrow will mark two months for me in that role, and I just want to take this time to introduce myself. I was born and raised in Kennewick, the son of two migrant farm workers from El Salvador. And in 2020, I became the first in my family to graduate from a four-year institution. I graduated from Washington State University, Go Cougs, with a degree in finance. And since then, I've worked for the United Farm Workers Foundation, the Group Health Foundation, and I'm very honored to come back to my hometown and really develop something here for us. Some of my long-term vision for the DPDA is to really focus on the basics and focus on the foundation piece that I feel like has been left behind for previous iterations of the DPDA. And, you know, if I could leave you all with two things, it's, one, this position is very difficult, and some days I feel like I'm just chugging along, inching along, and some days it feels like, you know, I didn't make any progress at all. But in that same vein, the second thing I would want to leave you all with is I felt nothing but tremendous support from our community here in Pasco, the board members, city staff, and business owners that I've had the pleasure to meet. I haven't met them all yet, but I feel like our community is very supportive of the best for downtown. I'm excited to work with you all and the rest of our community moving forward. And with that, I want to keep it short, because I know you got a long one today. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, who else would like to join? Gentlemen, can I come up to the table?
Hi, my name is Doug White. I'm the Democratic candidate for the fourth congressional, and I'm from Yakima. I came down here just to say, I believe that local politics is the backbone of this nation, and I appreciate the opportunity for people such as myself to be able to speak directly to our elected officials, which isn't something we usually get to do or do very often. Five months ago, I didn't know much about Pasco, but since then, I've spent a lot of time down here. I mean, a lot. I've knocked on hundreds of doors, I've shaken thousands of things.
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I pause you a second? I'll pause your timer as well. But, Mr. Ferguson, I know there's some specific laws about campaigning in public facilities.
This is not campaigning.
And I just want to make sure what we've gotten from our legal, any advice of where we may step up, please just feel free to signal me.
Sure, sounds good.
Okay, we're good right now?
You're good right now.
Excellent.
Good right now, thank you very much.
My apologies for interrupting, but that's really important.
It's good to chat, it really is. So, you know, I just wanted to say, I've knocked on hundreds of doors, I've shook thousands of hands, and I've listened to everybody that would talk to me. And, you know, and there's a lot of pain in this community. There's lots of pain in lots of communities. But one of the things that I learned about Pasco is there's this sense of community that just is different than many other places I go. One, you've got a downtown. One of my members of my team actually chose to move to Pasco while they're working on my campaign, and it is a joy every time I come down here to be able to spend time. And I know it's because of the fact that it is people like you that step up with the passion and the dedication and the hard work in order to make sure that the community continues to grow in the most positive of ways. So just kind of following on the voice of him, thank you very much for all that you do. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak tonight? Sir, if you're going to speak here, say your name for the record, please.
My name is John Penny. I'm actually not a citizen of Pasco, but I wanted to give my perspective on the proposed cannabis shop for Pasco. I'm only here to provide information, I'm neither for or against the dispensary in the city limits. I like to keep things as simple as possible. For me personally, I see business as business, and if business sells something I like, I purchase it. If they do not sell something I like, I do not purchase it. It is simple as that. For me, I do not consume cannabis. But just for transparency, I mean, everything that happens in Pasco directly affects me and my family. Not only do I work in Pasco on a regular basis, I live within a mile of where we're standing now. And I also think my perspective may be of some use as I have worked with the homeless community and the addicted population for five years. I have two years of prior law enforcement experience as the Director of Home Detention for Pima County, Arizona. I have a degree in addiction and currently operate as the Director of Recovery Services for three-reverses therapy specifically to this topic today. I'm overseeing the Recovery Navigator program. I'm not here to promote the services we provide, but rather elevate the people who consume our services. Just for a little bit of clarity and context, the Recovery Navigation Program is responsible for responding to non-emergency calls for people that are suffering from substance use disorder. We receive referrals from our local law enforcement agencies, fire departments, crisis response, emergency rooms, as well as self-referrals. Since the program launched April of this year, we have received 156 referrals with 136 calls for service directly. Of those referrals, only 11 have reported consuming THC, and only three of those were homeless. And I would like to take a second and compare that to something like alcohol, which is sold right down the street. That accounted for 15 other referrals. Of those 15, 10 were homeless. And what is significant about that information? Of the 11 cannabis-reported usages, zero of them needed to intend inpatient detox services, and all have been able to significantly change their life circumstances through non-intensive case management. That's the lowest level of case management that we offer. Of the 15 who reported alcohol use, only seven consented to services. All had to attend inpatient detox in Yakima and Spokane County, as we don't have one in ours. Without medical detox, the possibility for health complications significantly rises, things like seizures, death. I mean, it's one of the only things that you can withdraw from that can literally kill you. It undermines.
If you can wrap up, about 10 seconds left?
10 seconds, that's three minutes?
Yep.
Okay. To further this conversation, I would like to talk with City Council some more. The comparison, I think, is relevant between marijuana and alcohol. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And if you have any additional comments, we'd love to hear them via, if you want to email us or come to a different council meeting, that'd be absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, anytime. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you. Who else would like to speak tonight? And again, I'd encourage new information and new perspectives.
My name is Shiloh Morgan.
David Morgan.
So I wanted to kind of give you guys a little backstory of the Morgans. David was born and raised here in Pasco. We started our family here. We still live part-time in our family home here in Pasco. Our children attended St. Pat's, where I was the chair of the St. Pat's auction for three years and was the co-chair for the fund run at St. Pat's. David graduated from WSU Tri-Cities with his bachelor's degree in digital technology and culture in 2009. After graduating, we opened our first business, which was Versatile Design Studios, where we worked with the Tri-City Chamber of Commerce and the Tri-City Fever. That's when I started my volunteering with Junior Achievements, was in 2010. I did it for five years. I brought Pasco High and New Horizons to the state competition. My team from New Horizons won the state competition two years in a row. Before that, New Horizons was never a part of Junior Achievements. My son and I have always been a big, big part of the leprechaun limbo since it started. We continued until the last event in 2020. And then here, fast forward to today, our daughter Malaya has two businesses of her own and a little girl who is 18. So we are grandparents, we're just like everybody else. Lila is for sure Papa's girl. Our son, David Jr., he's top 24 in basketball at Lewis and Clark High School. It's just hard, because some people look at this as like, we're coming here to make money, and we're really from here. You know, we moved away because we went over there to open, because we were able to open over there. It was very difficult for me to leave, because I wanted to stay here. I wanted my kids to grow up in the same spot that, you know, my husband grew up in. So our son is top 24 at Lewis and Clark High School. He works at We Play in Spokane at the Viley Mall. He wants to be able to coach youth sports in basketball. I would love to continue volunteering and helping the community here in Pasco once we are able to open our store. It was really hard for me to move from Pasco to Spokane. I had a great community at St. Pat's. I went to school to be a teacher. I had a great preschool there that I was, you know, with great community of people. So it was a tough one for me to leave. Being able to come back would be, you know, great. Our kids, you know, love it here, they want to be able to come home to their home. And that's something we've always kind of dreamed about doing. I just, you know, some people look at this as like, it's, you know, they look at it as a negative, you know?
All right, thank you.
We're trying to just bring things back.
We're out of time today. Thank you very much, and we do have some tissues here if you'd like.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you. All right, ma'am. Are we, do you need translation services?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Buenas noches, señor del Consilio. Do we need our, do we need to wait, or is it just open?
Do we need our turn, do we need to wait or is it just open?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what question you're asking.
Do we need to wait a minute or is she okay to go ahead now?
We're ready to go ahead, if you just go ahead and push the button there on the um or either on, yeah. Alright, please.
Good evening, uh ladies and gentlemen of the council, uh my name is. Veronica Ramirez. I'm the owner of a business downtown Pasco, downtown in downtown Pasco. And the reason why I'm here. Is to ask for your support. For you guys to support uh the businesses uh to support us and the businesses in downtown. Uh we are not against the marijuana shop, in fact, uh we know that it has helped in many cases. In medicinal um um cases. The detail or the issue here is the place where they want to place it or uh put it at. We are in agreement with uh them putting it here in Pasco. But not downtown. The problem that we have right now that we are uh screaming uh. Basically imploring, uh begging you guys uh uh for is uh for safety, se- safety. Right now, if you walk downtown uh on the weekend uh from noon to two o'clock. Uh you see people on the streets having orgies, uh drugging themselves. Uh and I do apologize if I miss some of the information, I'm used to talking right when people talk simultaneously. Drugging uh using drugs. And families are walking around with their children uh in that environment. In fact, clients have mentioned to me. If anything else happens uh here in downtown Pasco, they don't want to come uh here anymore. Because of the insecurity or uncertainty or lack of uh uh security there or safety, I should say, I do apologize. Uh that there is in downtown, um and it has been very difficult for us. Through our hard work to be able to have those businesses there. We just ask for your support, uh me in representation of the businesses at downtown, please. Thank you very much, good night.
Thank you. And I will note that I gave I gave additional time because of the translation, so that did go over three minutes, but that was not three minutes of the of of public comment. Thank you.
My name is Elia Hernandez, I own two businesses at downtown Pasco in one house. And sorry, but I'm really angry. Uh there's a lot of things happening to me, to my business. You see my place, it looks like piñata. From people from the street that comes and break windows and my car's too damaged, I keep calling the police. Sometimes I had to call from a different number because they don't want to come help me. I hear a lot of trouble with kids and old people smoking marijuana outside my places. I own reception halls and it's not good to smell that thing. I remember, and I want to point someone, sorry, but back like two thousand and four. I was asking for permission to open a place to do dances for the young people. Only dances with no drinks, nothing at all, and the city of Pasco didn't let me, they don't let me chance to do that. Because they said that they want to bring people to shop downtown. They don't want businesses like mine. So I had to hire a lawyer to come. And help me and I asked for people to come with me, first time was like fifteen fifty uh other members. Boarding on favor. And by the next time, only one Spanish of the committee was on my favor, and you know why? Because Mister Rick White was knocking doors on the neighborhood to people asking to sign. Because they don't want my uh place order and I don't think. That's a right thing and they're not supposed to be happy, and I think the commit need to be. Looking for something good for our place, for our downtown. I've been there for a long time and I don't care if they want to open their businesses. They believe and if they have the only way they feel uh to make money. I made money the right way, not to selling drugs, not to selling alcohol, not to selling cigarettes. But if they want to open their their shop, that's okay. But I hope they can go out from the city. We have my kids with me and the business the whole time because we have house behind. And you really need to come and see damage. Yeah, sorry, I receiving tickets many times of the city because those people come and. Do a lot of stuff outside my business and throwing garbage and everything, I'm sorry, uh we need help, we don't want this anymore.
Thank you very much, and if there's anything you you'd like to um distribute to council, please just go ahead and hand it to the clerk, otherwise um feel free to send us a follow up email or anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton Maloney, could I interrupt real quick?
Please.
Could, could we just make that announcement for everybody so we're not having to do that after everything? Could everybody, if you have anything after you talk or or don't get a chance to, can you provide that information to the clerk before you leave tonight, please? This Deborah right here, this lovely lady to my right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campos.
So hi, my name is Lisa Lopez and I was born and raised here, my mother went to. Walk the fields to get to Pasco High back in her day. And I'm listening to all these different, some of these ladies talk about business in downtown Pasco. And I've been watching city Pasco spend money on downtown Pasco, including the peanut, which I really am not thrilled about that. But because we have lots of areas we can spend money on, she wants to talk about. All the dirtiness downtown, all the drugs, all the sex activity that's going on, it's more of an issue than. A pot shop opening up, that's more of a city issue that we need to work on. And figure out how we can clean that up and stop that from happening, because every time I come down to downtown Pasco and I love my Pasco. It's very discouraging, it's dirty and there's just so much going on that it shouldn't be happening and it's happening. What's the answer? I don't know, but that's what we need to look forward to work on. And especially as city employees, as city members, as city Pasco. Um residents, that's something we need to work on, we can't blame somebody else for what's happening in their front door. If nobody is responding to her nine one one calls about the drug addict shooting up in front of her business. That's something that the city should be following up on. I understand what she's saying, but she can't blame a business for that and. I just, I'm in dis- disbelief in what I see happening throughout the years. And so the peanut, for example, millions of dollars, what's the idea with that? Who's using it? We're not even using it because no vendors are signing up, why are no vendors signing up? Because the city of Pasco bought the Thunder Hotel that looks like trash over there. It's like, what are we doing? Why are we spending money in this way when we have a business who's going to be paying? The city Pasco tons of tax money. And we can't say that smoking pot is an addiction, it's causing the cocaine and the heroin and all the other issues that are happening. That, there's so much more to that, so I think we really need to focus on. What the city can do to help this and what what the reality is and what the problems are and how we can fix the issues. Not make excuses about why this is happening or why this doesn't happen, so. That's my three minute talk and I hope it was worth something because I just, it's frustrating when I see all these things happening, like. I would love a volunteer park over on one hundred and road sixty eight. You know, I would love my lawn where my drive, my driveway on Sylvester and Court Street to have a nice sidewalk. And the city Pasco be paying for the trees and all the trimming that goes on, on burden and everywhere else. So those are other issues that I like to talk about and like to think of you guys to think about, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Ma'am.
My name is Esther Romero and I am here because it's not that we want them to uh uh. Set up that store there or place that store there. Uh the only thing that we want is more uh safety because there's a lot of people uh on drugs. And I am, I have grandchildren and it's very sad for me to. Uh see that these people are on the streets using drugs um. Uh when they could uh work and because of uh doing drugs, they do not do it, basically, they don't work. And they can uh put it there, uh but let it be outside of our. Uh um area, if it can be outside city uh limits. Uh uh so that there are no uh drug addicts or people on drugs uh. Uh that break into our stores, uh when they do break into our stores, uh they uh. Uh get angry when we don't give them money um and um cause problems. What I say is that they can put it there, but not uh close by so that there's more safety. Um for us and for our uh clients. Because I have a daughter who has uh Down syndrome and if a person gets close uh. Uh to us and comes by and they have a weapon, uh they could hurt her and she doesn't know anything. And well, that's all I can tell you guys and I wanna thank you uh very much for uh helping us and. Uh letting us be there and I'm thankful to the city who has um helped us so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright ma'am, you can say your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Cindy Hewitt, um I currently reside at um one five oh nine West Washington. My property um backs up against a large field that is owned by Burlington Northern. Throughout the years, I've had to deal with so many homeless people that try to live out there and so. I gotta go out there and say, no, this is private property, you cannot live here. And I called the police and sometimes they get there quickly and sometimes they drag their feet. So I have to deal with it and quite frankly, I'm tired of dealing with it. Um I've called Burlington Northern on numerous, numerous occasions. And explained to them what the pro- problem is with no feedback. Um and it's not just the people out there trying to live in the field. The field is nothing but dead trees and weeds. It's a tinderbox. Um for years, I kept a fifteen foot strip. So because the field has been on fire before and every year, parts of it catch on fire. I kept a strip by my house so that as a fire block, I can't do that anymore. Because a large tree fell down and it completely covers the area, I'd have to hire somebody to come in and clean it up. In order to make that strip again. I I I know Burlington Northern does not believe they have a responsibility to the people that live in my neighborhood. But they do, they don't not only have a responsibility to my neighborhood, but they have a responsibility to the city of Pasco. Because it's an eyesore and it's dangerous. And I know I personally had a sigh of relief when you guys cut down all those olive trees. That were right there at the path and thirteenth and lane and put up the cages underneath the bridge. It makes it a lot safer. I mean, their responsibility is to clean up that field, clean it up, keep it clean. Keep it mowed so people can't go out there and hide in the weeds and the trees. And because I've called them and I gave no response, I feel like now it's your turn. Now you have to make them do what they should have done all along, okay? If I had a house anywhere and I had people, homeless people uh living there. Uh making a mess, uh doing drugs. And somebody called on me, you guys would make me clean it up, so why is this any different? Why do I have to do this? I mean, what's the next step? Do I have to get all the people in my community to sign a waiver? Do we have to get a lawyer? Something has to be done. And just for the record, uh you guys are building a homeless shelter. Which is only gonna exasperate the problem, way big, way big.
Alright, thank you ma'am, your time's up, but um Director White, could you speak brief, very briefly to how um the uh. How the previous speaker might be able to file a code enforcement complaint?
That's easily done online, ma'am, um there's a how do I? Do things on our website and one of them is file a code enforcement complaint. And that's, you can easily do that or do it in person here at City Hall.
Okay, well, I've spoken with Joseph Campos, he never told me that I could do this and I certainly will.
Yes, excuse me, excuse me, we're gonna have to keep the um the conversation down.
If I could, Burlington Northern is aware of this, the code enforcement officer is already on it. So there's already an action taking place based on your conversation with the council member Campos.
Did they give you a date is when they might?
We're we're speculating probably another, it's gonna be another week before they can get to it, but I'm I'm I don't know the scope of what they're gonna do, but I just share with you what I know. There are people that know about it and there's action being taken.
And I did also want to chime in, I have my property also borders the Burlington Northern and I actually have. The contact who I deal with uh when I see homeless in the fields off of Lewis Street. And I've actually seen the uh Burlington Northern Police do patrols in that area. Um and I could give that information to Dave Zabel, but I call him directly and usually he's within a couple hours. But you call Burlington Northern themsel- I'm just saying, you call Burlington Northern themselves, you get nothing, I mean, I've been very frustrated, but I've talked to the officer himself.
No, I've spoken with the officer myself too on several occasions and he is as in responsive as Burlington Northern.
Maybe it's a different officer, I was telling you.
Point of order, point of order, can I, can I bring something up? This proclamation's acknowledgements, we're not supposed to expect or or have anybody acknowledge it. And I just wanna point out, Mayor Maloney, your Proton Maloney, can we? If we have any issue like that, can we, can we bypass it? I understand this is just part of how we're supposed to operate tonight.
Certainly, certainly, I just want to make sure that the staff is able to clarify a process for the whole community, so thank you, thank you, Councilmember Campos. Alright, uh anyone else like to speak tonight, sir?
My name is Octavio Rodriguez, I'm a builder and I have spent thousands of dollars in downtown Pasco. And I heard everybody's complaining about business they haven't even opened yet, blaming the homeless people, which is, they don't even know if it's gonna happen or not. What we want is new business in town to make downtown Pasco look alive. Because if you drive at nine o'clock at night, it's nobody driving, homeless people look empty properties, empty. Cause if you drive at nine o'clock at night, it's nobody driving. Homeless people look empty properties, empty lots to come and sleep over. I start building right here across the street from here. After I start building, there's no more homeless people. Why blaming on a new business? Like this lady was blaming and required that he never give him a permit. They didn't give him a permit because she didn't have the. Then whatever needed to be a permit. It's they have to see what it is, not blaming on a new business. I spent thousands of dollars to shut down businesses. I got so many investors that don't wanna come in downtown Pasco because it looks dead. When new business come, they shutting down. Looking at it that way, they're never gonna change. If you let more people come and make downtown Pasco alive after nine o'clock. Homeless people, they starting going away. I own properties downtown Kennewick and the same thing happened. They started building, there's no more homeless people. But people don't see the reality of homeless people. They want empty lots to sleep. Because nobody bothered them. That's why they starting coming over and coming over. When people come in and cleaning or do something, they walk away. Why blaming these guys? Because somebody paint their wall, somebody break their window. Doesn't has nothing to do with the new business. And homeless people, they're homeless people because they decide to be a homeless people. Some of it, they're sick, they got addiction of drugs. But has nothing to do with marijuana, I guarantee you. Cause marijuana don't make zombies for the street. That's different drug by the use. Not blaming on a new business because I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in downtown Pasco to make shut down businesses. They cut me down to my business. It's for everybody. Not because somebody paint a wall, they're gonna shut down somebody's business. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Sir, you say your name for the record, please?
Hi, uh my name is Eduardo Marquez. I just moved here from Sunnyside. But uh I I've noticed one thing that causes me concern and the thing is the real root problem, which is. Uh asking around, there's no detox to get those homeless people out of here. Not just move away, but help them to get out of the street, you know? That is the major issue right now that I see. It's like if you until you solve. Until you give them an opportunity to solve their addiction problem, they were always gonna be there. You know, and that's the neglect of all of us, everybody here, because we all had the opportunity to vote. You know, that's the sad part. Uh my twin sister, she worked for the Girl Scouts and I drove. Gosh, all the way to Silverwood to take the girls with my sister over there. And I drove back and as we were dropping off the girls to the house, I got scared. I got scared because there was a lot of dangerous things going outside. As these children have to go home and sadly say, you know. Avoid or resist the temptations. And if anybody says, oh, it's this guy's fault, this guy's fault. No, no, we have a horrible culture of blaming somebody else. When it's us, you know, we are the ones that caused this. Everybody here, you know? You know, I don't drink. It's been ten years since I had a drink. I'm not gonna blame the store for somebody else drinking. But at the same time, I gotta help the person suffering, you know? I understand, I'm I'm a Mexican. My culture's embedded in me. I love it because we love our families. And the grandmothers are scared. Because they see where the progression of how they used to be to how they are now and it's scary. You know? What's the city doing to resolve this? Are we talking about a detox to get people help? You know, are you helping them uh with the crime problem? What's it, what are we doing? What have I done today to resolve this? That's the problem.
Thank you.
I have a whole different subject. Can I talk again?
I'm I'm sorry ma'am, we're gonna have to limit comments tonight. As you can see, it's already getting pretty late. So we're we'd love for you to come back in uh um at our next business meeting or send us an email or give the curve of call. I I appreciate that, but we're we're gonna have to move on to other speakers. Is anyone else tonight that they'd like to speak? And then.
Hi, um my name is Michelle Fister and I grew up across the street from Longfellow and um I currently live in Kennewick. But um Pasco's been my town most of my life and I don't see any problems with the revenue coming into the city. It just seems kind of lame that everybody's pointing fingers at different things just to try to bypass what they really feel is they're scared. Um it seems kind of ridiculous. Revenue's revenue, however it gets here, and that's a massive amount of revenue. I'm a real estate agent. That just makes my spidey senses go crazy. I mean, I you're gonna bring in tax money and revenue for the city, for the county, for the state. And that goes straight to education. It goes straight to jobs. It and you're gonna bring people in here that are shopping for that or gonna shop for other things. You're gonna be having other businesses come in because of that business. It just it's just revenue on top of revenue on top of revenue. And if you just let the business build itself. All of this other stuff falls apart and falls away and it all will take care of itself. It's just. If you watch how businesses grow and towns rebuild themselves, they do this downtown. You guys are already refurbishing downtown. You're already doing the legwork. Let these businesses come in fresh and bring people in to spend their money here where we need it spent. Because that money comes back to us as roads and sidewalks and developments. It all works. I just. I'm sorry, I'm gonna be done, but just let the business be business.
I'll keep it short. Leo Peralos, thirty nine oh two Charleston Lane. First, I wanna say congratulations to new Councilman Irving Brown. I'm a member of your district and we look forward to, you know. Start a dialogue and and I guess addressing complex issues, which brings me to the meat of what I wanted to talk about, which was. Um I'm a member of the Latin Business Association, um also community member. And uh our association is not against businesses. We wanna see diversification of businesses in downtown. Um we just don't wanna see a marijuana shop in downtown. I think there's other places across the city. Um mainly maybe perhaps King City. There's a lot of development that's gonna be happening out there. I think we think it would be a good fit for out there or just anywhere on outskirts of town. Again, we're not against business. Um and we look forward to more dialogue with the city council um regards to this issue because this is a very complex issue and and we would be the first. Of the tri-city cities to allow it. Um I will just make some notes, you know, the amount of money coming in from this. May not be that much. Uh David Morgan did a presentation. Uh City of Spokane only got about eight hundred thousand dollars, which is again, not that much money. And and again, I I think our main focus from the Latin Business Association and other business owners is that we've made lots of investments in downtown. Thirty six million dollars for Lewis Street Overpass, six and a half million dollars for Peanuts Park, um bought the Thunder Bourbon Motel. We're making those investments right now to make it a family-friendly environment, which is what we want. Ultimately, it's up to the council to decide if they wanna allow this type of business in the downtown. Uh again, we have heard from people, um someone knew from Sunnyside, um that they're scared to kinda go in downtown and we have many things we need to address. We're not saying that and I hope people don't get from David Morgan's presentation that that's gonna make all this stuff go away. We all know we have work to do, but we don't think that a business of that uh nature is going to clean up everything. It's just not gonna happen. But a- again, we just wanna make um the businesses that we represent heard and and ultimately, it's up to you guys and and hopefully, there's an advisory vote. And more public input because I believe there's lots of people who don't wanna come down here who are scared, um that own businesses. Um who just don't wanna be in the spotlight and and hopefully, we can urge them to contact their council members um to let their voice heard. But again, uh we just think there's probably better areas for this type of business. Again, we're so. That's that's Latin Business Association and we submitted a uh one of our pages of of petitions that we've gathered from downtown business owners. Um we're gonna continue to get more, uh close loop on those and we'll we'll we will be submitting more of those petitions. Uh signatures to you guys here in the couple of days. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Uh good afternoon. My name is Gaudensio Felipe. I'm living here in Pasco, one oh ninth, North Ninth, uh in Pasco for almost thirty five years. I'm sorry I don't speak English very well, but I'm to try to my best, my best. Uh when I'm coming here the the first time, for five years, I'm working in the field. Just picking asparagus, cherries and apples. And this time, um the Lewis Street. Is a a lot of people, they sell a lot of drugs. And this time, uh the business tap hub was open twenty four hours eh every day. I see a lot of prostitution, drugs, a lot of people in this in this time. Lady later, I see when Pasco changed, the different business, they leave to the other area. The Spanish people, they buy the proper's. Right now in Pasco. We are maybe seventy percents, the community Spanish in in this area. I know the city to try to work uh for for bring more people. We see the chains. A lot of investment in the park, uh and the business. But I think in my opinion, the other day I come into my home, my home, and I'm smelling marijuana. My last son has thirty two uh twenty two years. Yeah, I had my um my nieto, so uh. My grandson, he has almost fifteen years. When I'm coming to the my home. I'm smelling marijuana. I'm asking today, I'm saying, who 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 smoke marijuana? They told me, no, maybe my friends, they coming. When I I see in close to my my home, it's a lot of people living there. Because they not has home. I'm to try give a food, but they not wanting food. They wanted money. I'm asking, why why living there? They told me they coming from Ciaro or from Portland, the big city. Because the people, they not wanting to live in there. They invite coming to these areas, small towns. That's when I I I respect the business they wanted to put in for sales uh CBD. I think, okay, right now is legal in this country.
Sir, if you could please wrap it up, thank you. If you could please wrap up, thank you. I appreciate it.
Oh, okay. My point is, uh we wanted to support the the business, but in though their area, not in Pasco. Because it's inclusive for the Spanish community. Right now, all the people in the working in the field, we not having nobody.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you. Alright, and I I will note that we are we're now past eight o'clock, so we've been listening to public comment for about an hour. Um and so um I'll ask for the last couple of comments. Um and then I'll ask for no further conversation on um uh regarding the topic of retail cannabis sales. But if there's other topics that we haven't heard yet today at all, I'd invite I'd invite those. So uh please.
David Cortinas, four eleven West Clark, downtown Pasco, Executive Director for the Latin Business Association. Uh today I bring fifteen pages of of signatures and business owners. Eighty one business owners have signed against the uh store downtown. Uh a hundred and fifty names of residents uh have signed the petitions to uh against a a store downtown Pasco. Now, as an advocate for business, I I I agree with a lot of them that have said here, we we need more business, but we don't need a pot store downtown. We don't need a pot store to come down to be the savior of downtown Pasco. You, the city council, have already made good decisions on spending money and investing downtown Pasco. You're doing it. We don't need a pot store to to uh try to beautify downtown. Walla Walla didn't become the city that it is today by putting in a a pot store downtown. Grandview, Sunnyside, Tappanish, they're all beautifying their downtowns. None of them have got a pot store downtown. All of them, Prosser, all of them are beautifying their communities and they don't get revenue with by having a store downtown.
Excuse me, can we? One second, Mr. Cortinas, can we please keep the audience's comments down? Uh we wanna allow him the the same uh courtesy that everyone else had.
Now, we we have talked to David. We told David, hey, you have every right to sell your 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 product. You're it's okay. But don't put it downtown where ninety five percent of our Mexican business owners have been working hard. And striving and buying up their properties and beautifying their properties the best they can without a pot store. Everybody agrees there's problems downtown. We can't blame all those problems downtown on the marijuana. Because there is no marijuana, but we still have those problems. Adding a pot store would even increase more. So we know and 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 we've done our studies, we've done our work, we've done our homework. If you go put it out in road sixty eight, it's not gonna be this crowd that's gonna be here. It's gonna be those businesses out there. They're gonna fill this chambers. Screaming and shouting, we don't want it out here. Or you go put it down road one hundred, see what happens with those residents. It's gonna be a whole different crowd of people come in here saying, hey, we don't want it out here. And we have taught today, Dave, go to King City. We'll support you there. We will promote you. But we don't want it downtown Pasco where there's these Mexican business owners are striving to do the best they can. And and the revenue, we're still gonna get the revenue. We're still get this revenue. They keep talking about lots and lots of money. It's not a lot of money. I will. It's not a lot of money. It is some money, but it's not a lot of money. It it it's some money and we'll still get it if they're outside of downtown Pasco. So the Latin Business Association, you know, we we've done our work. Last thing I wanted to just mention, Mr. Maloney.
I'm I'm sorry, you you are out of time. I've been very courteous about everyone's time. So if you have anything that you'd like to deliver to the clerk, we'd really appreciate that. Thank you very much. Alright, this evening, um if I I'd like to, um I think after an hour of of testimony and I think additional comments that the the rest of the council are and certainly myself would be interested in hearing. I'd be very interested in understanding further about other conversations other than cannabis this evening. Um and so if if anyone like to submit written comments about cannabis, we're interested in hearing that. There will be further discussion at our at our workshop meeting next week where we will where we will be talking with staff about and making some decisions as council. Uh but I'd encourage and ask for anyone that is not interested in speaking tonight on retail cannabis that has not yet spoken today. Please, sir.
Excuse me. Um yeah, four oh two West Lewis, Carl Holder, uh the the location of the retail uh cannabis store. You know, we've had a lot of conversation and obviously slow rolling by the city. Maybe we should take a vote over here and how many people would like to have a marijuana store at four oh two West Lewis?
Yeah, sorry, I'm I'm sorry, we're not gonna we're not gonna do that tonight, Carl. Thank you. Ma'am, is is this by a different topic than retail cannabis sales?
My name is Bonnie Dickman and it's, I just wanna say one thing regarding David Morgan and his wife Shiloh. David has grown into an excellent businessman and if any of you were to go look at where he does have his place in Spokane. It's absolutely wonderful. It's clean. He's made a very good progress at what he's got and um.
Alright ma'am, thank you.
He's just a good businessman. That's what I wanted to tell you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, Council. Stephen Baumann here. Three quick things. One, it's inappropriate to dictate what somebody says in public. In a public comment period. Second thing, um this has been on the council's agenda for years now. I think you need to take careful consideration and and address this marijuana thing. Third thing is I think you need to uh maybe consider and adjust the format of the. Of the city's council meeting to put in the public comment period or potentially a second public comment period later in the meeting. To allow the opportunity for public comment on some of the actions that take place after the typical public comment period. I don't think it's uh it's uh done properly where the the public can't address some of the actions that are taken. Thank you.
Alright, appreciate that. Any other conversations? Again, if um I I'm gonna ask if if there's anyone else that wants to speak about uh Mr. Morgan directly or cannabis. I'm gonna I'm gonna ask you not to speak tonight. I'm going to I'm I'm gonna ask you to leave the podium.
Hello, my name is David Penn. Uh totally different subject than that, although I support that. Kinda reaching out, uh a lot of feedback from the community. I spoke at the vigilante of a kid that was killed over on road sixty eight. Just wanna address like the 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 shootings that are going on, like, you know, what can we do to support these teenagers out here with guns? Uh sorry, I don't, it just kinda caught up, it touched me real close as a family. But um maybe establishing some dialogue for some outreach centers, uh something for the inner city youth, black, mec Latino, white. You know, they're all having issues. You know, they're all having issues right now with, uh, gangs and, and just not having an opportunity to grasp onto something else. There's a lot of kids right now that are just teetering to be sports athletes and go to college. And then there's some that's following in the footsteps of uncles and dads into a gang culture. Uh, I know a lot of kids that are out from Pasco, I'm from Pasco, I grew up here. And I just see, I don't see anything being done, you know, when we were, and I wasn't the great example as a young kid, but, you know, uh, there's more people in the community that were at least saying something to us. I see just a lot of kids, it's, uh, it's out in the streets with no guidance, um, no one to talk to, no community center to go to. Or just no opportunities to not choose that lifestyle. It's only giving them the opportunity to choose the lifestyle. So, uh, maybe we, uh, could establish something to help these kids in the city, uh, to focus on succeeding instead of, uh, what's going on right now, because in Pasco, Kennewick, it's happening everywhere. I don't know, you know, so maybe gang, uh, interventions, some mentorships, uh, with people that have been through this already. And that's kind of all I wanted to say tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, one more call for any visitors, um, that do not want to speak about retail cannabis sales, or specifically, uh, Mr. Morgan and his, uh, his credentials. I'll get you next man. Sir, if you could say your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Octavia Rodriguez. Um, I own Just Juice in Kennewick, I own a construction company. Um, I'm an actor, I've been on, uh, guest star on multiple TV shows. Um, I say that to say that I smoke marijuana every day. And I don't mean to talk about anything regarding the retail sales, but just want to give you a little bit about my story. Um, I've done all kinds of drugs, snorted cocaine, uh, hallucinogen, so then I, I mean, all kinds of things. Um, as long as it wasn't injected, or, you know, I didn't smoke crack or anything like that, but, um, drank a lot of alcohol in my younger years. Um, I had two heart attacks when I was eighteen because of alcohol, cocaine, um, mushrooms, acid, DMT. I haven't done drugs since. I smoke weed every day, it hasn't affected me. I own multiple businesses, um, I'm a functioning member of society. Weed isn't the issue, and demonizing weed is absurd, and it's time to move forward, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ma'am? Yes, please.
My name is Terry Henricks, and I live at eighty-four zero one Tucker Drive in Pasco, Washington. And I thought it might be interesting for everybody to know what Pasco was like back in the seventies downtown. I worked there for almost ten years. It was booming. There were, but there were, there were also homeless people too. But you know what? Those people, we had Young's Connection, we had, um, there was a Primus Shoe Store. There was a real great jewelry store there. There's a, a record store on the end of it, on the end of the nether. There was also a beauty school that sat there on the corner. There's also over here, um, anyway, what I'm trying to say is cannabis, eh, eh, you know.
Ma'am, we've heard, excuse me, ma'am, we've heard a lot about cannabis tonight, and I'm asking you to please, if you could.
No, I was going to say, I was going to say cannabis was there then. I, I watched Witness Backdoor Deals. And this is in the seventies. And I wanted you to know, I think you would find this interesting, I knew Peanuts. I'm giving up my age now, but, um, I knew him, I knew that man. I was there when they did the, for the fountain, when they, the fountain got put in. It was wonderful, it was fun. It had nothing to do with Latinos, it had nothing to do with whites, it had nothing to do with anything like that. That's not where, where, where we get to looking at the, the race portion of it, that's not good. That's just not good. And like I say, that town can be booming. I've watched it, I worked there. I mean, they took those homeless people, they would take them to the top hat and buy them soup, the managers. That's how they would handle it back then. And you know what? I also witnessed guns back then, policemen chasing other men down the road with a gun. And the guy's wig fell off, they had to put a chair over it, they ended up shooting him in the back alley. Um, then I watched another happening across the street when there was the Pasco Post Office. Some man was running down the street through what, I looked, went over and looked to see what he threw, because the police didn't see him throw it when they were chasing him. And it was a big rubber raft. So all of this stuff did take place back then, even when it was booming. It had nothing to do with, I mean, I, 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 I don't know what to say, except for people were buying marijuana back then too, and it was the black market. And for me to see cannabis, cannabis, people, this is.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you're, you're.
One thing, one thing, okay. My, my impression is, if you're not going to let something illegal come into a place and be sold legally, then you're supporting the black market.
All right, thank you. Any last comments from folks on, again, not related to, um, Mr. Morgan directly or on cannabis sales or use in downtown?
Craig, I want to say something.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cortinas, you've had your opportunity tonight, so. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Cortinas, you've had your three minutes tonight, so thank you very much. Please feel free to send us an email, um, you know, we'll read it, thank you. Any, any other member of the, uh, um, public like to speak tonight? All right, thank you very much, and with that, we'll wrap up our, uh, our public comment tonight. Um, I'll ask my fellow council members to convene, we'll show a break, or are we ready to mosh on to the agenda? I'm here in power through, so let's, we'll go ahead and move on to item seven, uh, reports from committees and or officers. Woo, all right, um, uh, Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney, I don't envy the position you're in, that is quite difficult, and thank you for running a tight, tight ship. Um, I had our Ben Franklin Transit, uh, Board of Directors meeting on Thursday. It went quite well, our new general manager is, uh, she seems very promising, she seems to know her stuff, and we are very excited. I saw Clint Diddy, her smile. Uh, he had a grin on his face the entire meeting. She is, uh, also running a very tight ship, she's looking, condensing some of our committee meetings, uh, along with, um, you know, Jeremy Bishop. And, uh, I just really look forward to seeing what she brings to the table and, um, doing work on that board. Originally, it was a little bit of a chore, but it seems that she's brought a little bit of new life, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what the, the lady can do.
All right, thank you, uh, Councilmember Campos. Councilman Mill.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. I did have a couple of good things that went this last week. Uh, what I've been working on, uh, a grant for the city of Kalima with the multi-club, the Rotary Multi-Club. And it did get approved, took forever, but, uh, to get, uh, rehabilitation equipment down there in Kalima. So it was really good, now we're waiting on them to finish up their part so that the money can be transferred. So anyway, that was great news. And then also, um, on a second note, we also had our COPA meeting, and I had a meeting with Blanche Barajas and other staff, uh, last week. And we talked with the mayor of Kalima about her visit coming up here next month. And I thought it went well, and, uh, very excited about the sister city and, uh, interaction between us and the different things that we could do to grow our community. And then I also had the chamber lunch today, which was really good, and we had a really good discussion about how gas prices got to where they are. And, uh, I won't go into it, but I will say, if you really want to hear another good speech coming up, we got Mr., uh, Dave Zabel will be speaking next month. So, uh, if you want to hear his good speech, come next, uh, next month at the Pasco Chamber. So, anyway, that was it.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilmember Serrano, do you have anything to add for reports?
I've got nothing to add, thank you.
Excellent, all right. Looking around, I don't see any other lights on, so I will move on to the next item on here. Eight hearings and councils, and council action on ordinances and resolutions there relating thereto, non-listed. We want to nine ordinances and resolutions and not relating to hearings. First up, we have, um, an ordinance amending the Pasco Public Facilities District Charter. Uh, Director Ferguson, or not Director, uh, Mr. Ferguson. Sorry, I tried to give you a promotion right now.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'll take it, yeah, I'll tell you what, that sounds good. Uh, so, yeah, so this was, uh, the item that, uh, uh, we spoke, uh, a little bit about, uh, last week. We didn't have an ordinance, uh, put together for you yet, because we weren't exactly sure about what all it would entail. Um, we, uh, went through the process, uh, looked at, uh, the charter in depth, and really wanted to make sure that, uh, because the, the PFD Board is getting ready to adopt their bylaws, uh, which, uh, as most, most folks know, is, is really the thing that they use to operate their, their, uh, day-to-day, uh, business and their meetings, uh, and their rules, uh, for them. Uh, we were concerned, and I'm, I may, uh, have oversold a little bit, uh, my, uh, concern with regard last week to, uh, the extensiveness of the charter. Um, and going really through it and ki, and, and as we're step-by-step going through the, the bylaws that we were recommending, as well as the charter, um, they're really, uh, we, we thought there was more redundancy than, than I think that there actually was. So, um, I feel like I kind of, uh, led you that there was going to be a ton of changes, and I really only gave you about, uh, half a sentence of changes here, so, uh, um, uh, but, uh, it, it's also one of those things that, um, uh, just because you could change something, uh, doesn't mean it's necessarily the right thing. I think we've got a really, uh, strong charter, I think our bylaws, uh, that we're going to propose to the board, uh, tomorrow, uh, fit, uh, really well with them. Uh, I think, uh, they should be able to do all the business that they need to do, and I didn't want to, uh, uh, I didn't want to, uh, get caught in a situation where we're, uh, we're, we got a solution looking for a problem. I think, uh, we're, we're really in a good spot, well, with both of them. So, um, with that, uh, we just ask that, uh, you'd consider the, uh, the minor change, um, that, uh, related to the ability of the board to, um, hire and employ and, uh, contract for their own staff.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Uh, any questions from, uh, council? Councilmember Serrano, do you have any questions to this item?
I do not.
All right, and then I would entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number forty-six oh four, providing for amendment to the charter of the Pasco Public Facilities District and publishing a restated charter and further authorized publication by summary only.
All right, a motion from, uh, Councilmember Campos, do you have a second?
I second.
And, and then seconded by Councilmember Brown. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. Uh, any opposed, say nay. All right, uh, with that, uh, we have, uh, approved, uh, ordinance number four six oh four. Move on to, next item on the agenda is, uh, I, um, item B, ordinance for a budget adjustment Schlegel Park Boat Launch and Park Improvements Project. Uh, Director Signal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The amendment that you have, uh, in front of you is a standard one, uh, that the council, council has, um, gotten used to seeing for some of our projects that might need some budget adjustment. Uh, Schlegel Park bid, which was approved by council very recently. This is, uh, an amendment, um, to reflect that bid, uh, and differences between what was budgeted for this biennium versus, um, the actual bid that came back.
All right, thank you very much, and I will, I will certainly say, from my perspective, I appreciate the budget amendments along the way, so it's not one big wrap-up at the end where we're trying to remember what we did. So, very much appreciate this practice. Any questions or, um, comments from council? All right, with that, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number forty-six oh five, amending the twenty-one twenty-two biennial budget of the city of Pasco, Washington, by providing supplement thereto and, or to provide additional appropriation in the city's capital improvement fund for the completion of the Schlegel Park Boating Facilities Improvement Project and future authorization, future authorized publication by summary only.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Campos and seconded by Councilmember Roach. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. All right, uh, resolution, uh, or ordinance passes. All right, with that, I'll move on to item C, Resolution Notice of Public Hearing Date for LID number one fifty-one Final Assessment. Director Worley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. Uh, just wanted to remind everybody that LID number one fifty-one is the Northwest Sewer LID. And with that clarification, I'd be happy to turn it over to Maria Sarah, our CIP manager.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Protem and council members. We are here presenting to you a resolution to fix a date for the public hearing associated with the final assessment role for LID one fifty-one, which is Northwest Sewer LID. As you may remember and may have seen in the packet, this, um, project, this LID was passed in twenty-twenty. Construction started in twenty-twenty-one and now has been finished. Uh, recent, uh, project acceptance came to council, and we are now ready to provide a final assessment role. Following all the regulations of LIDs, we will do that in a public hearing setting. And, um, a few things to note is that when the LID commenced, it was, uh, conformed of eight parcels. We now have about eighty parcels that are part of it due to subdivision, and there's still a lot of land to be further subdivided. So the sooner we can do this process, uh, the easiest it becomes for all of us involved. Um, another item to note is that the project originally was anticipated to cost five point eight million dollars, and due to very, very competitive bids, uh, the total project cost, uh, came down to about three point three million. So it's a considerable, uh, reduction in overall cost, which is reflected in the assessments. And with that, the, uh, time chosen for the public hearing for the final assessment role is September nineteenth at seven PM during a regular, uh, council meeting. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
All right, thank you very much. Um, council, any questions for, uh, Ms. Sarah? All right, then I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number forty-two thirty, fixing a time and place for hearing on the final assessment role for local improvement district number one fifty-one, and directing that notice thereof be given in the manner required by law.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, that's moved by, uh, um, Councilmember Campos and seconded by Councilmember Roach. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. All right, motion passes. All right, with that, that, we're done with section nine, we'll move on to ten, unfinished business, non-listed. Eleven, new business, um, we have one item on there, um, for an appointment of the, to the Tri-Cities Regional Hotel Motel Commission. Uh, Ms. Barnum, it has you as the, uh, the listed, uh, discussion, but I'm happy to turn it over to Mr. Zabel, who has his light on if you prefer. Mr. Zabel, please.
Good evening again, uh, Mayor Protem and council. So, uh, our longtime Tri-City Hotel, uh, Commission Member and appointee, VJ Patel, after many, many years of serving the city very well, has, uh, stepped down, yeah, leaving a vacancy. So we went through the process, which under our inter-local agreement, uh, essentially is the Tri-City Hotel Motel Lodging Association, uh, working through nominations, they put forward, uh, a nomination of, uh, uh, Mr. Beach, also of A-one, uh, Jerry Beach of A-one Hospitality, uh, to, uh, take the role on as a, as commissioner for the vacancy. So, I'll note that, um, you know, for those in the audience that aren't, aren't familiar with, um, uh, the, the tourism promotion area, it's, it was created through a inter-local between the three cities, uh, uh, Kennewick, Richland and, and Pasco. And essentially, uh, there's, uh, the, the, the TPA assesses a fee, uh, under the authority of the three city council members per room, generates certain amount of money for tourism promotion. That money is distributed to the city and then back to the TPA through, uh, a work plan, which, uh, this council hears about, about twice a year. You get a budget presentation, which you're going to be getting fairly soon, next month or so, and then a mid-year report. Uh, so, with that, uh, the, um, council action requested tonight would be to confirm the appointment of Jerry Beach.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Zabel, for, for, for that explanation. And I will certainly say that, um, uh, Mr. Patel has been just an amazing community advocate and a longstanding, uh, member of, of a number of organizations, including the, uh, Visit Tri-Cities, and he's, he's spoken very eloquently about the needs of Pasco and our tourism industry. So he will be certainly missed, and I, I hope he's still going to be around the community to, to help us out when we need it, so. Um, with that, is there any questions or on the, uh, agenda item tonight? All right, I'm hearing none, so if I could, I'd entertain a motion, please.
I move to confirm the appointment of Jerry Beach, A-one Hospitality, the Tri-City. the Tri-City Regional Hotel Motel Commission for a two-year term commencing on September first, twenty-twenty-two and ending August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. That was moved by Councilmember Compost and seconded by Councilmember Milne. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. All right, with that, item twelve, miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Zabel.
Just one, one quick item, given we had a lot of discussion on the cannabis issue. Just a reminder, workshop next week. It's not going to be necessarily open to public comment, but council will be considering this issue. And obviously tonight, we heard a lot of broad perspectives on it. So I think it warrants the amount of time council's spending on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes, City Manager Zabel, just a quick question. I know we sometimes have special meetings. Are there ever special workshops that we hold? I would think that as many people turned out today, there's probably need to have listening sessions with the community to allow them to at least speak freely about the topic. It's not always fun to be on the receiving end, but it is certainly necessary. So yeah, do, can we have a special workshop?
I mean, that is something, if the majority of the council wishes to do that, we could do a special, it would be a special meeting.
It would be.
Yeah, in front of the workshop. But that's certainly something we could do that would allow for public comment. I think our, our thinking, at least from staff standpoint, was to be able to provide council some policy questions for council to answer. And part of that would be direction on an outreach plan. You know, we heard everything tonight from additional meetings to wrap it up to advisory vote. You know, so I mean, there's a lot of differing opinions out there. I think that's pretty much runs the gamut right there, but at least on that particular issue. So I think probably there's some time council's going to need to talk among themselves. So that, that can happen in a workshop setting. Or we could do a special meeting, get a little bit more public input before council has those discussions. That's really up to council to decide.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that question. I had a similar one, Mr. Zabel, if you don't mind me following up. And then, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I was just curious with the special, I know you said it's at the beginning of the meeting. Could it ever be like at the end of the meeting where you could actually hear what people said after the presentation? I mean, sometimes, you know, we have our own opinions and what we think, but it's also good to hear people's opinions after they hear the same thing that we're hearing. Or does procedure have to be, the special meeting doesn't have to be at the front? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times we'll do it on front because just the, on the hierarchy of meetings, I guess, a special meeting is a little bit more, has a little bit more weight in that meeting because council can actually take action in that meeting. And so hitting seven AM, seven PM meeting time is pretty easy. Having a workshop where you don't know exactly how long it's going to go and then having a start time for your special meeting. We could wind up having to cut the workshop short or it could go long and we'd be late starting the meeting. Or, you know, I've seen where councils have maybe even started their meeting early so we wouldn't all sit around for twenty minutes. And then, you know, there's folks that said, hey, I thought the meeting was starting at eight o'clock and I got here at eight and you guys are halfway through it, so.
Okay, I guess my main point would be nice to actually hear some feedback from constituents, you know, at least if it was like one minute long or whatever after the presentation. But if it's not possible, I'm just saying it would, would be very nice to hear what other people are thinking when we hear something and then sometimes you hear different viewpoints. So that's why I was trying to get out more along line with what Mrs. Roach was talking about, so.
On that note, thank you, Mayor Protam Maloney. Councilman Milne, you bring up a good point and I think it's important because a lot of times, you know, what we discuss and we kind of workshop up here oftentimes already accounts for what the public has to say. And I think sometimes it's been fruitful, especially in like opportunities where we can, we can kind of maybe discuss, public hearings, right, for example, where we can kind of discuss an item prior to going to public hearing. It's like, oh, there's a lot of people in the room and it's like, oh, the council all is in favor a certain way or they all have an opinion on this that mirrors what the public, the audience is saying. We have less people come up and, like you said, there's, to, to the audience's credit, you know, we have provisions in the Open Public Meetings Act where we can kind of condense and try to streamline our meetings, right? So we are allowed to, you know, put a time limit on things, try to limit, you know, redundant comments. But, and so something like that, I think, you know, Councilman Milne, you bring up a good point is, you know, there, there may be less comments based on the fact that we're taking this very seriously, looking at all the angles, doing our homework, getting feedback in emails, et cetera. And then if we have open dialogue upfront, it might answer a lot of the questions or concerns that people in the audience have before they come up here, right? So I, I think your point is valid. But I understand where the staff's coming from is it's very hard to plan for. And so I'm not, I'm not twisting the wrench here. I just think it's, you know, David brings up a good point.
I think, you know, council can layer their, or council can run their agenda item how they want to run it. You know, if we, if we want to have a special meeting starting at seven, we can give the presentation. Council can decide, we're going to do a little deliberation here first and talk among ourselves because you can only do that in a public meeting. And then, you know, once, once the councils had enough dialogue, they could certainly open it up to public comment and get the public's opinion on whether or not there should be special use permits or whether we should, what, what the outreach efforts of the city should be, you know, as we, as we move forward on this or the other items that, you know, which zoning districts should allow cannabis and what shouldn't. You know, those are, those are things that after you've discussed them and everybody's kind of heard the facts and some council opinions and, and debate on it, you know, there, there would not be any, anything wrong with the council then saying, let's, let's hear from the audience for a half hour or so.
So if I understand, Mr. Zabel, we don't have to have set up as a business meeting or a special meeting to hear from the public. Is that correct? We could allow.
You could actually do that in your workshop. You just have to waive the rules in that workshop on that item.
So if we wanted to, we could have, we could have public comment before and after during a workshop without having to worry about a specific timing of the meeting.
Yeah, or you could just do a special meeting right at seven and on that particular item and do it that way, however, however council wants to do it.
I appreciate that. And I know, I know personally, I very much want to hear more from the public and I'm frankly interested in some of the listening sessions sort of format that we've had and passed for before our council retreats, where we have more of a public forum that's outside of council chambers, which allows people that maybe not feel fully comfortable speaking at a council chamber in this very strict and time-limited and business-focused meeting and allow it to be more of an open dialogue about, about this topic. So certainly I'm interested in having that conversation next, next week, next Monday, as we as a council try to figure out how do we, how do we move forward correctly on this. But I think that, that for me will be the right time for us to maybe, maybe set out for staff the direction that we need, that we'd like staff to start pursuing. But certainly it does, it sounds like we will not have any sort of, there's no resolution. There's no ordinance that's going to be in next week's meeting. We're going to still be discussing how we want to proceed and, and what the big topics are. Is that? That's my understanding of.
That's accurate. That's accurate.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, I'm sorry, just to clarify, can we put it on the agenda after we hear from people? Like a public comment section where people can or are we, are we up for that or not? That's what I'm asking.
Are you asking for tonight?
All way.
No, I'm, I'm saying.
All way in.
Let's say, Mr. Serrano.
At the workshop meeting, after we hear the presentation, could we have a section where the public then could comment? You know, whether it be one, two minutes or the three minutes max. I mean, I know it's going to talk to the meeting later, but this is a pretty big issue. I'm just asking if we could put it in the agenda, but if everybody says no, I'm, I mean, I'm amendable to what the council wants to do. I'm just saying it would to me make more sense after the presentation to let, to bend the rules, Mr. Zabel was saying, and, or change the rules for this particular thing. So I'm asking to do it, but if everybody doesn't, I'm, I just want to see where everybody else is at.
Thank you. And just, just to clarify on that, we could change, could we change the rules as part of the workshop or that would be an official accent that would be taken? Mr. Ferguson, I'm looking at you and then Mr. Serrano, I'll absolutely turn it over to you.
Sure, yeah. So you get to run your meetings, you get to be in charge of those and how you want to do those. Typically, there's a couple of different things you have to look at. You have the OPMA, which is the state code, and then you have your, your own code, your PMC's. And so there's a lot of flexibility in there. Your current agenda is in the code this way. You can obviously do that a couple of different ways. The chair of the meeting always has the ability to open it up, to comment. The biggest key there is to make sure that it's equal. That's really the biggest concern is that anytime you open for comment, if the chair decides to do that on their own, they can do that. The council can also do that as a body and elect a change, adopt an agenda that would be different. And I think that's, I believe that's what Councilman Milne is getting at, is a potential council change going forward. But correct me if I'm wrong though, I think what I'm hearing though is that next week is just the workshop, basically the process to talk about what the process will be. And, and then we'll get that. But so that's what I would recommend, just because at this point, it doesn't sound like there's clear direction on what those next steps would be. And if it's a workshop and it's not an immediate, there's nothing that's going to need to happen the following week at the regular meeting. I think that gives maybe a little more time, but that, that's just my suggestion, but certainly it's your meeting.
Mr. Ferguson, I appreciate that. And if you don't mind, sitting up, there's a memo on that to, to let us know what we can and cannot do at next meeting and so that we can change on the fly if we need to pivot. Councilmember Serrano, I apologize for cutting you off earlier.
No worries. It's, it's always hard to participate remotely, when to say, when not. Anyway, caveat with my understanding of the meeting is the same as Mr. Ferguson just expressed, that being that we're talking about what, how we'll talk about this in the future. I don't know that next meeting is the appropriate time to bend these rules to allow for additional public comment. I don't think we'll even come up with a particular plan. We will at best give staff direction about what we'd like to see. So I, I don't know that there's a whole lot of value in just extending the meeting and, and hearing those comments. There's no way everyone in the city of Pasco will agree on how they want this rolled out. And I think we should come up with a plan, a strategy, whatever you want to call it, to implement on how to socialize this. Mayor Protam, I've heard you advocate for those listening sessions. I think those have been wonderful for city development and I think they should, should, could and will operate in the same manner where we'll get, you know, that broad swath of constituents. We'll hold it, hopefully we'll resolve to host them at different times, different locations. And, and that, to your point, is muscle, much less rigid, much less, much less formulaic. And hopefully, you know, I'd like council to always be inviting in our chambers, but I know that's not all the case for everyone. So hopefully by implementing some type of strategy, we can hear from more of the community. So again, I, I don't think we need to invite comments. Obviously, if people are very adamant about how they want to advocate for or against the position, they ought to be contacting us via email in the interim. That's all I'll say.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Serrano. So, Mr. Zabel, I'm not sure we gave you a ton of clear direction, but I think we all expressed that we want to hear more and we want to hear more feedback as we develop a path forward. And so I would, I guess I would ask for you, for staff to be ready for us to pivot next week if we so choose after hearing from, from, from staff. Is that, is that a reasonable consensus? I certainly don't want to speak for everyone, but I, I, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm hearing is that we're not sure we're, we're wrapped around a, a path forward here. Mr. Zabel, any, any other comments or thoughts on this?
Yeah, I think we have that clear. I, I don't think, I mean, next, next week, the, the process, the discussion's going to be about what the process might be on how we go forward. So I'm assuming that's probably where public comment will be. It's probably not going to be on the pros and cons of retail marijuana. It's going to be, should we or shouldn't we do an advisory vote? Should we or shouldn't we require a special permit? Those kind of things. And I, probably not a lot of folks are, maybe, maybe I read this wrong, but I think the bigger issue is should we or shouldn't we, period? And how we do it is probably not as, probably one is less, as much public input.
I appreciate that. And, Mr. Zabel, I think when we see the agenda, our agenda come out next, later this week, I think we'll also have an idea of how much we want to, how late we want to stay that evening. All right, any other miscellaneous discussion this evening? All right, I am not seeing any, so move on to item thirteen. I understand there is a need for an executive session tonight. So we, City Council now meet in executive session to, for, to discuss consideration of site selection or acquisition of real estate purchase or lease if likelihood of that disclosure would increase the price per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one B. Also for a consideration of the minimum offering price for sale or lease of real estate if there is a likelihood that disclosure would decrease the price per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one C. And I believe we need to announce the factors involved in that. So that staff to let us know what factors we might be considering for that.
So I think the primary ones would be price, of course, timing of development and proposed use.
Excellent, thank you. And, and the third item we'll be discussing in executive session is a discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one I. All right, and we'll be joined by the city manager, Mr. Ferguson, for our attorney. Who else will be joining us tonight, Mr. Zabel?
Deputy City Manager and myself.
Excellent. And we'll be in executive session for twenty minutes. I'd ask for a five-minute recess first, so we will be back at nine-ten.
Also, I apologize, Director Rakey as well.
And Director Rakey.
Virtually, yes.
Excellent, thank you. All right, for that, we're going, we're adjourned to executive session. All right, for that, we're going, we're adjourned to executive session.
And there's a need for us to extend executive session by five more minutes. We will be returning at 9:15.
All right, we are back from executive session and with no further action in front of council, we are adjourned.